Aren't we live, Todd?
Yeah, okay. Well, good morning. It's 9:00 AM and I'd like to call to order the August 2nd, 2022 City Council meeting. Please call the roll.
Garza?
Here.
Fast?
Here.
Bagwell?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Pyros de Carvallo?
Here.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this morning's prayer will be given by Pastor David Dubovich. Thank you.
Let's pray. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us, oh God, that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence that your creation deserves. Lord God, as we are in the midst of elections today, we seek to better understand the issues and concerns that confront our city and our state and how the gospel compels us to respond as faithful citizens in our community and in the life of our community. Many wonderful activities are beginning to take place, leading up to a block party in a few weeks to celebrate our community and county's historical anniversary of 150 years of existence. And we thank you, oh God, for those individuals who had the foresight and took a leap of faith to instill in many lives a great community to grow, to work and play in. And so 150 years later, we are grateful for their lives and each of us who continue to strive each day to make our community and county a great place to grow, to work and play in. We ask this in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, and through the power of the Holy Spirit, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Beautifully said. We have several proclamations this morning and we're going to start with the proclamation for Emancipation Day, so please join me at the podium. Come on up. Well, before we get started, I just wanted to mention that Emancipation Proclamation Weekend was always such a special time for my family, growing up in Hutch. We've had this celebration for, I think, 133 years now.
Yes.
And I can remember just so many fond memories of my brother and my mom and I going to what was always my favorite part was the Gospel Fest as during our fine arts. So I regret that I'm gonna be out of town and won't be able to participate this weekend, but I really implore the citizens of Hutchinson to take advantage of this beautiful celebration that we have. It's very unique to Hutchinson and yeah, I'm just really excited that this legacy continues. So with that being said, whereas on January 1, 1863, President Lincoln proclaimed that all slavery be abolished. And whereas, a constant struggle has been going on to accomplish the goals of that proclamation to bring true freedom to the oppressed people. And whereas, in 1935, Aaron Johnson, along with James Woodson and Lester Harrison, were members of the Kansas Lincoln Day Club of Hutchinson that sponsored the 10th Annual Emancipation Program. And whereas, in 1936, in Hutchinson, the Emancipation Proclamation Day Celebration Committee, a nonprofit organization, was organized to arrange proper and fitting activities in honor of emancipation. And now therefore, I, Jade Pyros de Carvallo, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim August 6, 2022, as Emancipation Proclamation Day in the City of Hutchinson and urge the entire community to help celebrate this important occasion. Would you like to say a few words?
Good morning. I'm Kathy Roberts, President of Emancipation, and thank you very much for the proclamation. And we do encourage you all to please join us on Friday night. We're starting out along with the Pope and Parson with the dedication at the Chester-I-Louis plaque. And then we'll go on to the Jazz in the Park, also have a teen dance that evening. And on Saturday, please join us for the parade. Starts at 10 o'clock from Avenue B up to 12. And then 12 o'clock, we have a community picnic open to anybody and everyone. It is free. We'll have activities for children. We'll have music. Lots of fun things going on in that evening. We'll have a dance. And then on Sunday, we close out with the Gospel Fest and Ice Cream Social. So I really encourage you and hope I see everyone there. Thank you.
Okay, and as Kathy alluded to, we also have a special proclamation for Chester-I-Louis Day. So Dave, I think you're gonna accept this proclamation if you don't mind.
A whole group of people.
Okay, please, please join me at the podium. What a joy to be able to recognize such an important son of Hutchinson. Whereas, Chester-I-Louis is born in Hutchinson, Kansas, in 1928, where he grew up and attended Hutchinson Public Schools. And whereas, Mr. Lewis obtained a law degree from the University of Kansas and shortly began an acting change in Kansas by desegregating public spaces, restaurants, and aircraft companies. And whereas, Mr. Lewis is widely regarded as being instrumental in one of the nation's first sit-ins in 1958, as he trained and prepared students to peacefully protest, which eventually led to the desegregation of the drugstore lunch counters across the state. And whereas, Mr. Lewis's legacy of fighting for civil rights and his dedication to people who have been disenfranchised is relevant today, is as relevant today as it was then. And whereas, the City of Hutchinson is proud of Mr. Lewis's legacy, as he continues to inspire citizens to create an inclusive and equitable community. Now therefore, I, Jade Pyros de Carvallo, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim August 5, 2022, as Chester-I-Louis Day and encourage all residents to join in celebration and solidarity and further urge all residents to actively raise their own awareness of the significance of this celebration of African-American history in the City of Hutchinson. Would you like to say a few words?
Good morning, Council. Dave Zatell, Human Relations Officer. This is a great celebration and we're really excited to finally have a plaque narrating the history of Chester-I-Louis. There's a few reasons why it makes me excited to see this work happen. One is just the collaboration from Rebecca, Justin Combs, staff here at the city, and then community members, Hutch and Harmony, the NAACP, and neighbors who have been involved in the process of deciding this park. And just, I love walking by the park and seeing the art, seeing the landscaping that's on the wall. All of it is just so exciting to see that work. The second part, and I'll be brief with this, I had, just at the beginning of this year, a concerned citizen was calling all the departments around City Hall, really wanting to know why the city would spend stupid amounts of money on this park. What a disgrace, she said, it was for Hutchinson to have this space in our community. Those faces should not be highlighted in Hutchinson. And her and her husband went on and on and on, saying words that, to refer to Hispanics and African-Americans, that I'm not even comfortable saying again. It was heartbreaking to hear folks express in such ways of a point of pride for our community. After, you know, most of those times with those phone calls, I tried to not give them the time of the day, but it was confusing to me because for the most part, citizens of Hutchinson love Chester-I-Louis Plaza. So I did stab and say, do you know who the park is dedicated to? And they had completely no idea. They thought that it was somebody else from another town, from another city. And so I had to spend some time educating them on who Chester-I-Louis was and the history that he had and how proud we should be as Hutchinsonians to claim this person as our hero, that he did a lot of great things for the state, but it all started here in Hutchinson. And so we'll continue to make improvements to the parks to highlight that history and hopefully continue to educate our community of the contributions that black folks have had to our community in our history. You know, Emancipation Day, this tradition that's as long as, as old as Hutchinson almost, right? So that's still part of us, it's still part of our history. And there are some out there that don't want that to be highlighted, that don't believe that. Still, in 2022, that's still the reality that we live in. And I don't know, kind of makes me anxious and a little upset that that's still true, but it also invites us to continue this fight, to make sure that everybody in our community feels welcome, feels included, feels loved, and then that we encourage them to become the best version of themselves here in Hutchinson. Thank you.
My name's Daryl Pope and I'm very happy to take pride in the fact that Hutchinson has taken time to recognize, pardon me, a pioneer in the area of social and equal justice. I think that it's quite a tribute to our community to recognize the contributions this young man made, not only here in Hutchinson, but across the state of Kansas. And it's with a deep sense of pride that I appreciate this and thank also the City of Hutchinson for what you've done.
I'll jump in and mention a couple of things with regard to Chester-I-Louis. You all know that I'm like some kind of a history maven, I guess. And so I want to just mention that over at the library, we're gonna be putting up an emancipation celebration display, but part of that will include some information that actually does pertain to Chester Lewis. And of course, there's plenty of other information about Chester Lewis there at the library, as well as all the contributions that have been being mentioned already this morning. But the thing I'll, one of the things I'll mention about Mr. Lewis and his background and family is that he came from a family that actually ran a newspaper in Hutchinson, Kansas. It was called The Blade. He grew up working that newspaper. His mother was a longtime teacher. And also, this was something that I just discovered not too awful long ago and ordered for the library a copy of The Green Book. I don't know if you've heard of that. It was the, there's a movie by that title, and so maybe you've seen that. But it was the title of a book by Victor Green, and it was called The Negro Motorist's Handbook. It has actually been revived in the last couple of years due to events across this country where black people traveling around the country would have a resource for safe places that they could go and stay and visit and get gas and eat and stay overnight and so forth. Well, Chester Lewis's family home was a location in The Green Book in Hutchinson, Kansas, for every year of the existence of The Green Book. It ran from 1936 to 1966. And the Lewis family home was a tourist home listed in The Green Book. It's amazing to me, the depth and breadth of that family's work for this country. So with that, I'll give the floor over to someone else, but I'm extremely proud.
Yeah, well, no, I think all of you for your comments and especially Dave, your emphasis on the collaboration that was necessary to help this come to fruition. I think nothing great happens without collaboration and unity and coming together. So it really is exciting to be able to celebrate that now. And the last proclamation is for our sesquicentennial celebration. So Rebecca will be joining me at the podium. Whereas, the City of Hutchinson was incorporated on August 15, 1872, after the Santa Fe Railway contracted frontiersman Clinton C.C. Hutchinson to create a town where the railroad crossed the Arkansas River. And the town grew just north of that location on the banks of Cow Creek, named after its founder, and designated the seat of Reno County, which celebrates, celebrated its 150th anniversary in 2021. And whereas, salt beds were discovered under Hutchinson in 1887, spring increased industry and leading to the city being called colloquially "The Salt City." And the city grew through its residents' entrepreneurial spirit, resilience, and grit, creating a diverse economy and hub of commerce in the center of the state and country. And whereas, Hutchinson is a full-service city of the first class that strives to support the quality of life, belonging, safety, and opportunity of all its residents through careful stewardship, integrity, and collaboration. And whereas, the mayor and city council of the City of Hutchinson recognize the efforts of the committee, which has planned a mile-long block party down Main Street to celebrate the 150th birthdays of both the City of Hutchinson and Reno County, to take place on August 18 in downtown Hutchinson. Mark your calendar. Whereas, on August 15, 2022, the City of Hutchinson will ceremoniously unearth a time capsule buried at City Hall in 1972 in honor of our centennial and will later place a time capsule to be unearthed in 2072 to celebrate the city's bicentennial. Also, mark your calendar for the 15th. Now therefore, I, Jade Pyros de Carvallo, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, do hereby proclaim the year of 2022 to be known as Hutchinson Sesquicentennial Year and August 15, 2022, to be known as Hutchinson Day in the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, and call upon the people of Hutchinson to join their friends and neighbors throughout the community in celebration of the history and future of our town. Okay, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you all. It is a long agenda and three proclamations, so I know we aren't, you know, we might be a little sleepy from that, but man, some awesome stuff going on in our town, so they're all really great proclamations, and I'm gonna take a little time anyway. So thank you, Council and Mayor. It's an honor to be a part of the Sesquicentennial Celebration of the City of Hutchinson's incorporation. 150 years ago, this community made a choice to be more engaged in their own governance, to pursue a shared vision for their community, and to serve the public good by establishing a government to pursue those things through local rule and public service. Today, city employees, volunteers, and community members continue that work. Of course, a whole lot has changed since 1872, but some things remain the same. We don't always agree on what that vision is. For example, founder and namesake C.C. Hutchinson was a prohibitionist who wanted Hutchinson to be a dry town and for it to literally be named Temperance City. He would not be very happy about our ordinances on the agenda today. He did not get his way. But just like then, when we work collaboratively and come to the table knowing we all want what's best for our community, and even when we don't necessarily agree on what that is, we can do amazing things. As we celebrate this milestone, we continue to work towards a shared vision. We work to expand the table, to include more voices, more lived experiences, and more ideas, so that in 50 years, at the bicentennial, there's still even more to celebrate. As a reminder, at 10:00 AM on the 15th, to commemorate Hutchinson Day, we will have a ceremony to open the time capsule from our centennial in 1972. At the same time, we will bury one to be opened at the bicentennial in 2072. The public's invited to join us for cake and lemonade at the ceremony, and the unpacking of the time capsule will be livestreamed. We're also seeking items for the public to include in the sesquicentennial time capsule. For more information about that, please visit hutchgov.com. And I just want to say sesquicentennial one more time before I go because I've learned how to say it and I'm not gonna have a lot of opportunities after this year. And with that, I'm gonna let Amy Conklin come up and talk a little about the block party. Thank you.
Good morning. Amy Conklin, Assistant Executive Director at HUTREC. My job here today is to talk about the fun, which is a great job to have. So August 18, from 6 to 9 PM, we are having the Mac Daddy of all Daddy Community Spirit Block Parties, where we're having not just one block party, but 13 block parties along a mile stretch in Hutchinson. It starts at Avenue C. It goes all the way north through Ninth Avenue, and we have more than 70 community organizations, businesses, partners involved in this celebration. We have talked about a lot of collaboration with all of our different proclamations this morning. Not only HUTREC, City of Hutch, the county, Reno County Historical Society, the Chamber, the Cosmosphere, I hope I did not forget anyone else, but we have all been meeting on a biweekly basis, which actually started several months ago by our mayor, who had that vision to have a mile-long table down Main Street. We've adjusted our plans since then, but we are really excited because we're gonna have 13 different block parties with a lot of great, family-friendly fun. It's gonna be free. It's open to Hutchinson residents and Reno County as we celebrate not only Hutch but Reno County with this big celebration. Please follow all of our social media feeds for more information and the full lineup because it keeps growing by the minute, and each week that we meet, it just keeps growing. So we hope that you can join us on August 18.
Thank you so much, Amy and Rebecca and the Chamber and all of the community partners. There's a lot of work that goes into these events, and it's just so exciting to see it come together and be an opportunity for the City of Hutch to, yeah, come together for a celebration. Okay, with that, let's go to the next item.
Item five, world communications from the audience.
Okay, now this is the part of the meeting where residents can address the council about items that are not on the agenda. We ask that you approach the podium, state your name and zip code, and limit your comments to five minutes, please.
Hope you're not tired of me yet. Dave Zatell, Human Relations Officer. I just wanted to bring something to you, Council. Last December of 2021, the Reno County Historical Society and the Reno County Museum came to the Human Relations Commission with an idea and a vision to rename a street in Hutchinson or give an honorary title in honor of Solomon Butler. Solomon Butler, I don't know if you're familiar with who he is, attended Hutchinson High School in the 1920s, was a star athlete in the football and track team, eventually served in the military and then went on to participate in the Olympics. He was injured. His record, his best PR, personal record, could have taken first place that year in the Olympics, but he got injured. There's been an effort to kind of bring back the history of who he was and the place he had in Hutchinson. He eventually left Hutchinson after playing football here because when he would get on the field to play against other teams, just a little bit of history, Hutchinson Public Schools were one of the only big districts in the state that were not segregated. So he could play in the football team with everybody else. But that was in that way for other schools. And so when he would get on the football field to play, other teams around the community would not get on the field until he would leave because he was black. So that's sort of some history of who he was. And so the commission approved a resolution to recommend to you, to council, an honorary name change of 13th Street, the 800 block of 13th Street. So it's right in front of Hutchinson High School, the YMCA, that little block right there, to be given an honorary title, Solomon Butler Drive. I've spoken to the entities that are on that block, so that's Hutchinson Public Schools, the YMCA, and they are very supportive of this effort. They're really excited about this process. We currently don't have a policy on our city council policies to address renaming city streets or giving honorary titles to city streets. We do have one for facilities and parks, which you might be familiar with, but not one for renaming, honoring city streets. And so we can follow that similar process, but I wanted to bring it to you before we look into it and the cost that it would be to order new signs, and I present to you if this is something that you would be interested in.
I would be interested in exploring it, but I didn't, how does the rest of the council feel?
I think it's a great location.
Yeah, and it's a small block, so it's not gonna be a dramatic change for a lot of the community. And I welcome that idea because there's no residents to live there. It's just the high school and the YMCA.
It's not really a thorough way either.
Right, yeah.
People aren't gonna get confused by the GPS.
Yeah, and it'll still be 13th Street. We'll just add. Yeah, and it'll still be Thirteenth Street. Uh, we'll just add, well, you'll see this in even Wichita starting this practice now of adding an honorary title to those streets. Uh, so it'll still remain Thirteenth Street. It's a whole process to, you know, change the actual address of a street. Um, and we're kind of hesitant to do that. Uh, so just giving an honorary title to that street would be awesome.
I think it's a great idea, really great idea. Honorary means that just gonna have the Thirteenth Street, and then his name will be on the bottom, correct?
Yeah, or usually they do it above, but yeah, we can look into that.
So at this point, all we're gonna do is find out the cost, or what, what's the?
I'll bring in a presentation to you, um, and then, um, sort of the next steps for you to take, i- if this is something you'd be interested in.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda?
Go ahead.
And I won't take too long. Jean McVey, thirteen swearings. First thing I wanna do is talk to you about my street, Swearing Street. Uh, I don't know who is in the audience that can answer this question, but is it, uh, I turned mine off.
I know.
I understood, uh, twenty, twenty, yeah, twenty twenty, somewhere around there, uh, there's a tunnel underneath my street, and I used to go in it when I was a kid on my bicycle and go clear the thirtieth street. It's that big. It's a box tunnel. And my understanding is that they were, the city wants to come in and, uh, enlarge it or redo it, something. I'm sure it's probably crumbly underneath there. But, uh, what I'm wondering is, is that still in the plan? My understanding was, uh, twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two. And I, I think we just talked about that.
Yeah.
Is it still in the plan?
Well, it is. So, we have been working on-
If you wanna go ahead and-
Oh, sorry.
You're on camera, Jeff.
Jeff Shankin Engineering. No, the, it was pushed out, um, a little bit. We think we had the mine road box failure, and that ate up a whole bunch of money. I mean, it's still in there, but we have to let the budget rebuild to move back into that.
My question is, um, the cities went to the expense of, uh, chip sealing a lot of these streets, and I wondered if, uh, we're gonna tear mine up and put a tunnel in it. Why did we waste the money with CCR or whatever their paving company? Uh, just a question. I mean, I don't mind the chip sealing all over town, but if you're gonna tear it up, why?
Well, the life, the life expectancy for a chip seal is five to eight years, and it's outside, it'll be outside of that when it would be getting replaced.
Okay. Now, I'm really gonna get on you now.
Yeah, you may as well just stay up there, Jeff.
Why did the city build a traffic hazard in the middle of the intersection of Washington and Seventeenth Street?
Was that your idea?
It was not. It was WSP's idea. Uh, they were-
WSP.
They're the consultant designer for the Bicycle Boulevard.
They need fired. Has anybody been down that street?
Yes.
Dodged it? Well, I have a map that I drew to bring it up and show you an example. The only problem is, it's now outdated, because they've added two more things on each end of it. And I talked to the chief, and I don't know if you've probably not old enough, Mayor, they now have Joey Chitwood ramps at the ends of these three obstructions. And you can hit that now, and you can go up on your two wheels and go on by it, and don't have to worry about hitting it. Is the city got insurance to cover a car that hits those things?
Jean, I'm curious, what happens when you come up on that obstruction when you're driving? What do you do?
If you're on Washington, you can't turn left anymore.
Do, do you slow down? Is that what you do?
Well, yeah, 'cause it's in the middle of the street.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's the purpose, is to, to slow down traffic to enable alternative transportation modes, like people walking or, or riding their bikes. And I recognize it's going to take some getting used to. I've felt it similarly. Um, if anybody who knows how I drive knows that I, uh, yeah, would prefer to just speed down the road. But, um, I think the, it's serving a purpose in that, uh, we wanted that to be a boulevard for people with alternative transportation modes to feel safe where traffic would be slowed. And so, when you approach it and you feel like, what an obstruction, I'm gonna have to completely slow down and, and kind of change my mode of operation while driving, although an annoyance, that's precisely the purpose of it. Um, so it's serving its purpose, Jean, not to the, uh, joy of many people in the city, but I think it's a matter of getting used to it. And, um, I know Sarah brought this up last, last meeting. She's like, let's rip that out.
Good idea, Sarah.
So, give it some time. Um, we appreciate your input on it. We, we've received similar comments from others. We've also received comments from the community advocacy group that, uh, really pushed for it to be implemented. So, uh, there, there are two sides to, you know, every policy decision, and, and I recognize that it's, it's not everybody's cup of tea.
Okay. Answer, my other question was, does the city have insurance to fix a car if they hit it?
No, no, not that I, no. I think that's kind of a personal responsibility issue.
Well, to answer the question, Gary Meeger, interim city manager, uh, obviously this, uh, the city does have insurance. In this particular case, and one thing that maybe hasn't been talked about this morning, is there are some warning signs that are gonna be going up. And so what you see right now is not a completed project. We're still in the process. So it'll be some warning signs to let people know, uh, that maybe are not quite as familiar with the intersection. And, uh, as Mayor indicated, it is, I think it is doing its job in the sense that is, uh, causing people to slow down for those bicycle, uh, uh, those that are on bicycles, and helping to keep them off of Main Street, which is even more traffic. So, um, although it is inconvenient and maybe a little bit different, uh, for some, it is, uh, the purpose of that is to slow the traffic down, make it safer for children and those on bicycles, uh, that ride bicycles to cross.
Okay, the other thing is that they've added these two ramps on each end of it now. They're the same color as the asphalt, and at night you can't see them. So, you might wanna paint them. Yellow, red.
The, the, I'll be adding striping around it, retro, with high retroreflectivity, which is to help, you know, see it, adding a yellow stripe, just like on the highway when you come up to the similar islands near, uh, Third Avenue in Lorraine. They have the little ramp up and, you know, the striping that helps delineate traveling around it, as well as signs that we're going up inside of the median, um, itself to help, uh, bring attention to it.
Well, like I said, you can't see it at night, and the ramps on the end. You can see the other thing, 'cause it's red brick. Uh, Sarah, I hope you get your wish someday. Jean?
I'm, I might remind you that I, I'm in agreement with you. It's very different, and I'm concerned that if I'm not paying attention, I'm gonna hit the thing. But if you follow the way that was funded, we did get a lot for our eighty thousand dollars. Yes, we sold our soul, and we have a, an island in Seventeenth, but we have about four blocks to the north that were, that were chip sealed part of it, bricks repaved part of it, and new infrastructure under the street for about eighty thousand dollars. And, and I think as a taxpayer, I appreciate that. Um, we did use state money. Again, we, I think the catalyst for that was putting that, that obstruction in the middle of Seventeenth.
It wouldn't be so bad, Mr. Fast, if it wasn't, uh, a main thoroughfare. I mean, Seventeenth is, is like Adams or Monroe or-
Certainly.
Poplar, uh, you know, that's, that's my concern.
Uh, my hope is that when it's striped and when there's signs that it'll be, it'll look a lot different, and hopefully it won't be looking the way it looks, because it-
Well, I, I hope so too, because, uh, I think it's, right now it's kind of dangerous, 'cause you can't see it at night, the ramps. And, uh, for anybody that's new in town right now, uh, that road's closed.
Mm-hmm.
Because the sign's up. The sign for the road closed has not been taken down, and it's not closed anymore. It's open.
Yeah. Well, duly noted. And Jeff, I'm curious on the prioritization of the striping. Do you have a, an ETA on that? On the striping, the reflective?
I don't at this current moment. Um, they ordered the multi-component paint back in October. It still hasn't come in yet.
Oh, wow.
Um, so we're looking at different substitution alternatives to see if there's some other type of paint that we can use to get it open. Um, and then the signs were also on back order. I believe they just came in, so they should be assembling all of those now. So hopefully here pretty quick. They, um, I've been working with the owner. Um, he's supposed to be submitting some substitution alternatives to me for the striping.
Wonderful. Well, keep us posted. Maybe at the next meeting you can give us an update. I'm sure Jean will be watching.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jean.
Okay, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the council?
I'm a Wind Oval. I'm not here for anything exciting as that. But, anyway, what, I grew up in Hutchinson, Kansas, and moved away and moved back here eleven years ago, and love Hutchinson. There is a thing I would like to visit with you about. I sent some of you deals, uh, just a few weeks ago about, uh, people picking up after their animals. Uh, I think, I'd like to suggest that we have an ordinance that would cover that. Right now, I don't believe we do. And, uh, I don't know about you, but I, I've been an animal lover all my life. But there's also a responsibility that goes along with having animals, and picking up after them is one of those things. It's real easy to do. Uh, several places I've lived, they have an ordinance where you need to pick up, uh, you know, after your animal. And it's real easy to do. You can just carry a little grocery bag or whatever with you, and after the animal's done, pick it up and go on. Uh, the thing for a homeowner, though, is, like, if you have kids and grandkids, you can't even go out in your yard without picking it up for somebody else's animal. If they wanna do that on their own property, I think that's fine. But out in the public where everybody else is gonna get into it or somebody else's yard, I think they've got a responsibility to pick up what they're doing. So, that's what I'm here about today. I'd like to have you guys consider some kind of an ordinance that would help us with that. Uh, I think it'd be better, you know, for the homeowners and everybody. So, uh, is it something that you have considered or will consider possibly?
Well, it's interesting that you bring it to our attention, because I just assumed we had an ordinance like that. I thought we did on the trails at least.
I thought we did too.
Do, do we not, Gary? I mean, Gary's like, I'm interim. I don't know.
I may have to ask the chief, but I don't believe we do. Um, Chief and I have talked a little bit about it, uh, but, uh, I don't believe there's anything on the books.
If it's on your personal property, how is it not trespassing for someone about their animals?
Well, the thing is, it's not always the person that's on the property. It's their dog.
Under their responsibility.
Well, that's true. But chances are, somebody's not going to call the police about somebody's dog on their yard or-
Depends how big the dog is.
Well, that's true too. But, uh, I, I just think it would help if there was something that they knew if they didn't pick up after their animals, it was gonna cost them. Uh, I, you know, you might, if you do pass an ordinance, I think you should, uh, advertise it, uh, you say where everybody knows about it. And maybe have thirty or sixty-day, uh, time before it goes into effect to make everybody aware of it. Uh, I don't know what kind of fine or anything like that. It varies in different towns that I've lived in, from twenty-five dollars plus court costs up to three hundred dollars. So, and it depends on whether it's the first time or the third time they've been cited for it. It's not something the police are gonna follow with people around. The, with the cameras that we've got now, all you need to do is just take a picture of it, and if you have some idea who it is, or maybe find out where they live, to turn it in. There's a lot of different ways of doing this, and I'm sure you guys can come up with something that'll work.
Well, yeah, I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, and certainly worthy of exploration. I would like a, a thorough, um, review of our, our current ordinances, because I'm, I'm surprised that we don't have anything on the books with this. And I, and I would be opposed, um, to it being anything criminal in nature. I would, wouldn't be opposed to a fine. I don't know how the rest of the council feels.
That's right. And that's the way it is in most of the places, uh, probably on the West Coast more than here. But the fines are really severe. They're up to five hundred dollars, and that's, that's the way out of town.
Pretty pitiful that-
We're not trying to punish anybody. We just want them to take responsibility for their animals. Uh, I've had an animal almost all my life, but I don't wanna start it with a new one at this age, you know? So, but it's something that I've done for years, and I don't even consider, uh, you know, anything to not do. So, please, uh, I think it'd make Hutchinson a better place and keep it a better place, and it'd make it a lot nicer for our kids and grandkids in the yard and, and in the parks. It's the same way. I mean, like the one across the street, there's no reason that they can't stick their hand in a little bag and pick it up and go on. It's just part of owning the animal. That's the responsibility. But anyway, please consider.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jeff Hooper, Chief of Police. Yeah, Mr. Meeger is correct. We do not have an ordinance regulating that. The, uh, kinda like Mr. Richardson indicated, one of the things we could look at if it's on a personal property is criminal trespass, or maybe you could stretch littering, uh, but both of those aren't really designed for that type. And that, you know, you'd like to think people would take personal responsibility. I think most of you know that I don't believe in heavy-handed or strong enforcement policies, and I, I would hate to have to regulate that. So, like the mayor said, I wouldn't want that to be criminal. But if you do pass an ordinance, you'd have to have some consequences associated with that. And so you have to look at that down the line. If somebody, if, even if it is a fine, they refuse to pay the fine, it goes to municipal court, or the person fails to show, or we're gonna then issue a warrant for failure to show up in court or failure to pay fines. And so you need to look at that whole gamut on how much of an enforcement mechanism you want to have for that particular ordinance. Um, I don't think we wanna put people in our local jail for fail to pick up after their animals. And so I think we just really need to examine where we wanna go with that. So.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Are there others in the audience who would like to address the council on items not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, please call the next item.
Item six, consent agenda.
Is there a motion or comments on the consent agenda?
I would move to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Pires de Carvalho?
Yes, next item, please.
Item seven A, consider resolution approving a special event in a designated entertainment district. Since our city attorney is gone, I'll handle this. One for him. This is in conjunction with August third Thursday event, and it's to allow Sand Hills Brewing to have an alcohol service station in front of the sleep shop. It will be extending into the sidewalk and part of the street area. So this is just like the resolutions we've done in the past, allowing that.
Perfect. Any questions or a motion on this item?
Yeah, when you sign a service station, it's just a trailer that sells the alcohol, correct?
No, I, I'm not sure if they will have a trailer or what, but it's a designated area where they can have service of the alcoholic beverages, and people are to remain in that area and not take it outside of that into other areas of the street or sidewalks.
Kind of like a little beer garden.
In spite of C.C. Hutchinson's wishes, I would move to approve the resolution.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion- Okay, motion and second. Further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Hiros de Carvallo?
Yes, next item, please.
Item eight A, consider 2021 audit presentation.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance. Before you is a copy of the 2021 Annual Financial Report. The audit was performed by Limburg, Vogel, Pierce, Ferris Chartered. They have presented an opinion that our financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with the regulatory basis of accounting. Randy Hoffmeier is here. He was the lead partner on this audit to answer any questions.
Hi, Randy.
Good morning. As Angela said, we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statement on the regulatory basis of accounting. One thing that you'll note, if you compare our opinion this year to last year, the format has changed very, very much. The new opinion this year, the opinion is at the very beginning of the document on page one. And because the city does prepare their financial statement on the regulatory basis, we first give an adverse opinion on government, on generally accepted accounting principles. But we give you an unmodified opinion on the regulatory basis. The opinion goes on, and on the second page, it talks about the city's responsibility for the financial statement. City's been preparing their financial statement here since, I think, 2012. They haven't asked us to draft it for them. They've done it themselves. Little bit further into the opinion letter, it talks about the auditor's responsibilities. I'm not going to read all that to you. We did have a single audit, which is an audit of your federal grant programs. So because of that, we also have a report on internal control and another report on compliance. And I'll get, I'll never get the name right. Hang on. Over each major program, which that would be the federal program that we audited. And there's also a schedule of findings and question costs that are included back on page sixty-one, I believe. And we had no findings that we reported, either financial statement findings or those related to the federal grant audit. Angela asked me to keep it short, so I will.
Well, pretty incredible that there were no findings. I think that really speaks to your leadership, Angela. I'm sure Randy could also comment on that, but always good to see no findings.
I'll make the motion to accept the audit as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further comments or questions for either Angela or Randy? Okay, hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Hiros de Carvallo?
Yes, next item, please.
Item eight B, consider Reno County request for Yoder Water District 101.
Good morning. My name's Brian Clennan. I'm the Director of Public Works for the City of Hutchinson. Also in the audience today is Don Britton. He's the Director of Public Works for Reno County. Gary and I met with Randy and Don back in early July. And at that meeting, they brought up an issue that they're dealing with, or rather, the Yoder community's dealing with, and it's high nitrates in their drinking water supply. So Reno County is currently looking for solutions to solve that high nitrate issue. And one possibility that they'd like to study to see if it would help solve that issue would be purchasing water from the City of Hutchinson. So in 2021, the Yoder community used eight point seven million gallons of water for the entire year. Our treatment plant is designed to produce ten million gallons of water every day. And in 2021, we averaged a little over five million gallons a day. So we do have capacity within the water treatment center to produce the amount of water that the Yoder community uses on an annual basis. Also, the City of Hutchinson currently supplies water to Rural Water District Number Four. And in 2021, they used about seven point two million gallons of water for that entire year. Also, in the memo to you, listed what the rates that that Rural Water District is paying, just for your information. So the issue, there's really two issues. And the first one is, is the city willing to sell water to the Yoder community or that Rural Water District that supplies the Yoder community? And then if so, what is the rate that the City of Hutchinson would charge? And city staff is recommending that we do sell water to the Yoder community and that it would be at the same rate that we're currently charging Rural Water District Number Four. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure Don would be willing to come up and address any questions as well.
I have two questions. First question, nitrate, you say, is in their water. We're in the same county. How come we don't have a nitrate problem?
Well, I'm not exactly sure what the cause of the nitrates is, whether maybe it's from fertilizer and agricultural practices in that area or not. We're fortunate that we don't have the nitrate issue that we're facing.
Second question, we do decide to get to serve them with water, do we have to build a pipeline from our city to them?
They would build the pipeline.
They would build a pipeline.
Right.
So they would, do they, do they have, they have a pump station now that pumps out of the ground? I'm sure they do.
They've got a well.
A well. So that well won't have nothing to do, I mean, we'll just send water to them, right? We don't have to build anything else more to push the water, would we?
Yeah, and so they have not done any engineering analysis yet, and they're waiting on this answer before they would spend any engineering money. But I believe they wouldn't supply the full amount, that full seven point two million gallons. I think they would look at blending, some of, using some of their water rights and using some of ours to help lower that nitrate. So there may be some sort of a tank that they're combining both of the water supplies in and then pumping out. But again, Don probably would be better to answer that question than I. Don, correct me if I'm wrong.
And Brian, this is just one option the county is exploring, right? And independent upon the engineering costs and the costs involved with that pipe. It may not be feasible, but really just being a good community partner and offering them and...
Hasn't this been an ongoing conversation? Haven't we had this up in front of us a year ago?
That was wastewater discussion for Yoder. I went back and looked at that, and I have all the same questions that you had back then with what does it look like when South Hutch wants water? When we run water out to our new industrial park? What are all those things? I think that maybe we need to decide when somebody requests that, a policy for doing that. I mean, I already talked to the South Hutch City Administrator about some of this, and obviously I think eventually we would provide water for them. We have the capacity, but I have a lot more questions than I have answers with this. I know at the beginning, it talks about the Reno County wants to study it. And then at the bottom, it says the motion is provide water to the Yoder District. And so that's a pretty big jump for me from studying it from the county's perspective. And I want to be good partners. I think that we, we all need to work together, but I have, I have concerns with maintenance and how much it costs us to produce more water.
And I do think we have the opportunity as Hutchinson to be a regional provider
Oh, for sure.
for these services. And that can contribute to, you know, economic growth in our region in a way that would really kind of put these communities without, on an island and, you know, hamper that growth that is going to contribute to our community too. So great questions, but yeah.
Yeah, so really Reno County's just need, they don't want to spend the money on the engineering study if the answer from us is no, we're not going to sell water to you. So that's why the recommendation is, you know, providing them some direction. Is the City of Hutchinson going to, or are we not going to? And then they can move on and complete their studies and their analysis and come up with the best solution for that community.
Well, I hope we would do the same as a city to make sure that we're fair and we're having our costs covered and not hampering our ability to...
I mean, I know we have a lot of water. It's one of our resources and assets that I think we could, like, be a regional provider. But I'm just speaking hypothetically. Do we have the capacity to upgrade our system in the future if we want to be more of a regional provider to all the surrounding communities?
We do. We've got room in our...
I think that would be where the start. I mean, if we have the capacity to, to upgrade later to produce more, then, then we don't have a cap or ceiling. And what would that cap or ceiling be?
And we're not giving the water away. We're selling it.
Selling it, yes. Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying. I always said that Hutchinson has lots of water. It's a good asset, and we should probably sell it. I'm not debating that. I'm just saying that if we do this as a strategy, do we have a strategy to upgrade to sell more? I mean, if this is something that we want to pursue, I always say if we're going to do something, be knowledgeable about it and do it well.
What did you say our daily use was and what is our capacity on a daily basis?
So in 2021, we have reached a little over five million gallons a day producing that at the wastewater, water treatment center.
We could do up to ten?
Yeah.
You're asking for seven million a year?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a pretty small fraction.
It's very small.
The other thing I would comment is maybe we need to be looking at some sort of master plan for South Hutch Industrial Park, Yoder and back, or something like that to where it works out better for everyone instead of piecemealing a water plant south of Hutchinson.
Well, and Don could probably speak too. So we're all already doing Rural District Four. Are there others out there that, you know, may need consideration in a larger plan?
Yeah, that's very well said. Like, maybe we should look at this as a larger plan, and that way the infrastructure is set up to expand.
My only concern would be delaying a decision on this particular item that might put the county more behind it.
I'm comfortable with saying that we'll sell to them because it is such a small amount. I'm just saying if they're going to do the study, why don't we think of it as a bigger picture?
Like, on a greater strategy, working with Don?
Yeah, actually Gary and I have been talking about looking at our water rights, and I've gotten some information from DWR, kind of assessing our total water rights, big picture. I haven't had a chance to dive into that spreadsheet. And Gary and I will be meeting with DWR here probably later this month to get their assessment of our overall water right picture. Those water rights, so there's a, you have to perfect your water rights. And so we're using about sixty-five percent of our total water rights right now, but we're getting close probably within the next five to ten years where we're going to have to perfect those. And if we haven't perfected more than sixty-five percent, then our water rights are going to drop back down, which, which will become an issue. So those are things that Gary and I are beginning to study, and we'll work with DWR to try to understand that impact.
I think it's an important thing because we have water.
It is, and also South Hutchinson.
And it's an asset that Hutchinson should market.
I agree.
Gary, don't ever leave us.
Council members, as part of that, we're trying to also gather information. For example, how much would South Hutchinson need and things like that. And so I appreciate Brian's work in contacting DWR and getting that information. We'll take a look at it, he'll take a look at it. And then if we need some additional information, we may look at doing a small study just to make sure that our information and how we're looking forward is going to be realistic. But we'll certainly be reporting back to you at some point on where we are with South Hutchinson and perhaps others.
Great. Okay, sounds good. Well, is anybody willing to make a motion with...
Well, I'd like to see if you hear from Don, if he's got something to say.
Don, I thought, I was trying to let you off the hook, but Garza said no dice.
Don Britton, Reno County Public Works Director. Good morning, council members. Yes, I, the county appreciates you considering this, and we've had this nitrate problem at the Yoder residents for about a year and a half. It fluxed weights up and down, so we tried to wait it out. And the way the existing well was drilled in the eighties, I thought maybe nitrate was coming in from the surface or, you know, not clear at the bottom of the well. So I had a test well drilled just in the last three weeks, which was over nine thousand dollars. And made it, encased it around the casing, there were nitrate levels from the surface couldn't get to the bottom, but we still have high nitrates even with the new well. So now that's, that's an option I don't have anymore. So if you do approve this, I will start that engineering study tomorrow if you approve it today. So if you do approve it, we would probably be buying water from you. I just have to, had to go through this to see if you'd approve it and then start this engineering. And then I'll have to determine, you know, what it's going to cost to run seven miles of water line down there, going underneath the state highway, underneath the river. It's going to be very expensive, but that'll all be on us. The only thing that I believe you will provide is connection and a single meter. And then if it causes, you know, if we have to have more pressure to get it down there, then that'll be on us to put in a pump. But yeah, there, we, what we'll probably do is we'll try to blend your water and our water so that we don't have to buy as much to keep the rates down because the rates are going to get very high down there for those people. And then they're going to have to pay for this infrastructure. They're already paying for their infrastructure, and I believe we're proposing paying one and a half times what you charge your people. So the rates are going to get high down there. This is my last option.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Motion to approve selling water to the Yoder Water District at the same rate of Rural Water District Number Four pays.
One thing is I'd like to add an attachment to that. After we do our little study, say we'll approve it, but after we study it and have all the questions that Mr. Fast has or the rest of us get, before we approve it, all the...
I want to motion it as is.
Excuse me?
I want to motion as is.
Is there a second on the motion as listed, or does somebody prefer the addendum?
Okay, what is the addendum?
I just want us to answer the questions. I have some more questions too on it. And if we approve, if we say everything looks good, learn more about it, and we say it looks good, then we go with it. We say, "Okay, let's go."
As far as the design?
As far as...
Selling the water?
Yeah.
I think it's a small amount that we can accommodate for now. I'm just saying as we move into this, we should look at it as a big picture. But I think we could go ahead and say, I mean, it's a...
Well, I think our intention is to sell water to the county, for sure. I mean, we need to get along. Huh?
I'm motioning as is, but I think a further discussion within our own department is going to ensue after.
I just want to be sure that we don't agree to sell them water at a certain rate and find out that the City of Hutchinson is carrying more of a load than that rate is paying for. I don't know what, you know, how much more it costs to produce a gallon of water, you know, if we start up in the production. Those are my concerns.
Did the recommendation include all kinds of cost? So, so the one and a half times rate is, we will not be incurring additional costs? I mean, you've already done those studies or...
Right. And so that's one of the things that we looked at when we do our rate analysis, to make sure that we are covering our costs and that not only are we covering our costs, but we're covering our future investments to upgrade and maintain our infrastructure. So the rate that they're charging follows along, that we would propose to charge follows along with the rate studies that we just went over at our last, you know, study sessions here a few months ago.
So full cost recovery plus?
Full cost recovery plus, you know, to make sure that we've got the ability to invest in infrastructure as well, yeah.
You're looking at somewhere around a third of a percent increase in what we're putting out right now as far as volume.
I totally understand that, but what I'm trying to be sure that going forward, we have a plan on how we provide water to more people. And if they're, that's all I'm saying. We need to be...
I agree. Larger conversation, especially about South Hutch, because that's going to be a large amount. Yeah.
Yeah, and South Hutchinson is a much bigger amount of water. And that's where Gary and I got together and we're like, we do need to do an analysis of that and see what the impact is to us. That may require us to make some major upgrades to the water treatment center before we could supply water to those folks. So those are the things that we're looking at. I'm not as concerned about the seven or eight million gallons a year.
Yeah, and I'm not either. And I definitely want to extend an olive branch to the county, especially for that little bit of an amount, but I'm talking bigger picture.
All right, well, then if we're talking bigger picture stuff... All right, well, then if we're talking bigger picture stuff, I would agree with moving forward with Sarah. I would second Sarah's motion. Knowing that we need to move forward with a game plan for our water use outside of the city limits on a bigger scale.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there further comments or questions for staff or Don? Okay, hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
One thing is one I was concerned about, we have to look after our citizens first and then the olive branch later. So on that, and you, that made me convinced me, so I'll go ahead and go yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Pires de Carvalho.
Yes, next item, please.
Item eight C, consider change order number one for Midwest Malibu and Wells Two parking lot reconstruction project.
Good morning, council. Jeff Shank continuing. The airport parking lot reconstruction, the airport parking lot reconstruction project was awarded to ProCon on six, seven of twenty twenty-two. When beginning construction, it became apparent that a utility owner had failed to locate their utilities for the survey, causing unexpected delays for the contractor. This caused a small overrun on the project. The airport manager wanted to know what could be done to fix the problem and an adjacent parking lot as well. That was damaging private vehicles. With the new flying club being based out of the hangar four, they have seen an increase in traffic. The original budget for this project was two hundred and nine thousand eighty-six dollars and ten cents. This change order would be for thirty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety cents. This would bring the project total to two hundred and forty thousand two hundred and eleven dollars. That, along with the thirty thousand three hundred and one dollars and ninety cents for a chip seal portion, would put everything at two hundred and seventy thousand five hundred and twelve dollars and ninety cents for the entire bond for parking lot or for improvements in the airport. This keeps it below the two hundred and ninety thousand dollars that was bonded for it. Staff recommends that the city council approve change order number one to the Midwest Malibu and Wells Two reconstruction contract with ProCon Construction LLC for thirty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety cents and authorize the mayor to sign.
Jeff, can you clarify why the utility that failed to locate isn't liable for the increase?
It happens frequently. I think it would be that the very small increase that you're talking about, I think you would be.
It'd be worth.
Before you get into an argument with them and then you try potentially get into any type of mitigation or anything like that, it's really not worth covering the cost considering that you work with the agencies so, so frequently.
Yeah.
You know, that's kind of goes the same way the other way, you know, when, if we hit one of their utilities, they typically don't come back and
Okay.
hit us, you know, with a fine as, as much.
So it's just kind of professional courtesy?
Yeah.
Because it goes both ways?
Right.
It is a frustration. I mean, why do we have locating requirements?
Right.
You know, if, if people aren't going to locate their utilities.
Do you know what utility wasn't located?
Yes.
I noticed it wasn't put in the report. Wasn't calling them out.
I have another why question. I don't like why questions. You already asked one. It puts you immediately on the defensive, but I'll ask it anyway. Why have, why didn't we figure in the bid to begin with that culvert that we're going to try to fix? I went out and looked at it and it, it's.
Junk.
And it has a spotlight right on it. I mean, it's got stakes all around it.
I can let Peter talk a little bit more to that, but I will say that it wasn't identified at the time of conception of these projects to me.
Okay.
Good morning. Peter Miller, Hutchinson Airport Manager. To answer your first question about utilities, it was an FAA utility. And it was also a utility that we owned that provided power and signal source to our rotating beacon. We had no idea where that was. We knew it was in there somewhere. We marked it as best we could. But at the end of the day, where the Midwest Malibu parking lot was, the old control tower before the control tower we have now, that's where it was located. So there were twenty-four, twenty-five different sets of wires that we had no idea where they went to. So we just kind of crossed our fingers and figured out what was going to happen. So I don't want to, I don't want to knock on the FAA at all and I don't want to knock on the local, local utility locator and stuff. I don't believe it was their fault. It was us not knowing where our stuff is, but we know where it is now exactly. So this, this won't happen again. As far as the, the improvements for the hangar four parking lot. When we put this parking lot project together in twenty twenty twenty, actually it's twenty nineteen, I think. It went through the budget cycle several different times. It got pushed back several times. In that amount of time, the, the use of hangar four changed quite a bit. The Flying Club just moved in there about six months ago. They bought a second airplane. That's also the hangar that the Cosmosphere uses for all of their space camp flights. So there is considerably more traffic there than there was before. It used to just be one or two people that used the hangar, had their personal aircraft in there. It wasn't a huge problem until it actually became a huge problem. So as we, as we got the contract for the other parking lots, I figured, well, this might be a good time. Let's see if there's enough left over in this project to, to address that issue. So that's why it wasn't as part of the original scope.
I'm certainly happy that it's getting done.
It certainly, and it's going to make a lot of people happy too.
Yeah. And I appreciate you, Jeff, explaining the design of Midwest Malibu's parking lot to me. Makes sense, complete sense on why you did it the way you did it, and I appreciate that. And anytime there's airport improvements, I'm happy, so.
Me too.
Okay, further questions or a motion on the change order?
Yeah, I got a question for you. Is that what, there's two towers. There's an old tower and a new tower, correct?
So the, the tower that we have out there now was built in nineteen fifty-one.
Yes.
The tower before that was just an old, I mean, I don't have any pictures of it or anything, but it was a wooden kind of military tower.
Yes.
That was used from the thirties up until they built that, that new tower, so.
Well, I used to locate those wires out there. I wanted to see. So it is a mess. There's wires everywhere.
Yeah.
So your locator had fun trying to find all that. I agree with him and, yeah, I know what it is a mess out there. You're lucky. I've located them before many, many years ago when I was an electrician. So I understand. Yeah. So we know the right wires now, right?
Oh, yep. Then everything's lowered exactly where it should be and everything was, was repaired and everything's working, so.
Yeah, I know the mess.
It's in good shape now. Okay.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve the change order. Number one to the Midwest Malibu and Wells Two parking lot reconstruction contact contract with ProCon Construction in the amount of thirty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety cents. Bringing the total contract to two hundred and forty thousand two hundred and eleven dollars and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Pires de Carvalho.
Yes, next item, please.
Item eight D, update on Thirtieth Avenue reconstruction from Adams Street to Main Street.
All right. During the design phase of this project, we reviewed the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. And it recommended adding a ten-foot multi-use path between Hendricks and Main Street. I ran a cost benefit analysis using the Active Transportation Benefit Cost Tool provided by KDOT on their Kansas Active Transportation webpage. I evaluated adding in the trail from Main Street to Monroe Street. The result was a favorable four point eight seven. This number is derived from calculated safety benefits using a national average. WSP worked with KDOT to develop it. And so it's a, it's a really good tool for us to have. This map shows the total length of the cost benefit analysis, the green being the current trail in design and the red the future trail. And we have incorporated this sidewalk into the plans and with the intent to bid this project in late winter. We're a little shorthanded right now, so some of our dates may push a little bit, but we still are aiming for that late winter bid date. The plan sheet kind of shows just adding the trail along the north edge. It would slide the road. Actually, it wouldn't slide the road. It would just narrow, the road, the street would narrow there. It's quite a wide street. So it'll have less pavement for us to maintain in the future as well as adding the room for the trail there on the north side, which would travel along behind everybody's fences on the north side of Thirtieth there instead of being in anybody's front yards. So it all kind of works really well. I'll be sending out letters to all the property owners this next week and just informing them. Basically, setting a meeting up at the Hutchinson Public Library and giving them a chance to attend and ask any questions or make sure there's no major issues with that. No, no, no action is required at this time. It's just kind of letting you know that way when the bids come in. This will inflate it just a little bit over what was originally requested in the budget. I mean, taking away the pavement, we're hoping that it still washes out. But if not, you know, it may come up and this would be something that if we needed to, we'd have to, we could easily pull the trail section out of this project and still continue with the original scope of the project. But just want to be aware, I know that there's been a lot of talk about sidewalks lately, that we are always looking with our projects to increase access for pedestrians and, and safe walking spaces, especially, yeah, when it warrants it. That is all for this. Is there any questions?
I have a question about sidewalks. Is there any, I know we put, we had twenty thousand dollars in the Healthy Neighborhood Initiatives. Was getting applicants for use of that. Do we know who were, who was awarded those new sidewalks?
I don't have that information with me. But yes, the Safe Sidewalk Program went through. When Ryan Vtech left and Jim came in, they kind of gave it back over to me. So I've been working with Jim and he's actually went to the Housing Commission with it and we've all selected as many of the properties as we can. And the Housing Commission's agreed to help bump in some extra funding to go ahead and capture the last couple houses that were outside of the funds that we had to us. And we're hoping to begin construction the first week of October.
So maybe we can get an update at the next meeting.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, I can bring that.
Thank you. Okay, if there are no further questions, next item, please.
Item eight E, consider twenty twenty-three IAFF local one seventy-nine memorandum of understanding.
Good morning, council. Tom Sanders, Human Resources Director. Very pleased with you, to be with you this morning to review the twenty twenty-three labor agreement that we've come to agree with, the IFF. We had one formal meeting with them on July first and was able to come to a tentative agreement right away. And the local membership voted on the contract on fourteenth, which passed. There's only a handful of changes and updates this year. One is the Article Seven payroll deduction of dues. And there's some new indemnification language added that protects and holds harmless the city in the event that there's any kind of conflicts between union members and their union on the deduction of dues. This type of language is very standard in labor agreements. So anyway, it's something we've not had, but was not a controversial issue with the IAFF. Holiday pay, we are going to be recognizing the Martin Luther King holiday next year. And so the IAFF is one of the, I think the only labor union that gets pay in lieu of time off. And so with the addition of that additional holiday for everybody else, this point eight hours per month of pay basically equalizes them with everybody else in the city. Also, the wage scale has changed. The firefighter bottom is going up two percent next year. The captain's range has been a little bit more dynamic. It's going up three point two percent next year and the top end going up nine point two. Appendix C, in our flurry to get the MOU out to you guys for the agenda packet, I think we, Troy and I both missed the merit matrix that's in that appendix. It reflects, I think, the original three point zero percent merit pool. I think Linda passed out to you the correct one, which is three point five percent. And it provides pay increases from anywhere from three percent to four point two five percent based on the employee's performance and where they're at in the pay range. And then the last thing was, is a letter of agreement. This provides mid-year adjustments to base pay that will be retroactively applied to July third. This is to help remedy some of the pay compression that we've had or been experiencing. Primarily due to a couple of years in the past where we've had low merit increase budgets. Those years were twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one. And like I mentioned, I think this proposal that we, the city offered really helps improve some of that wage compression. And helps us position our firefighters a little better in the marketplace in today's environment. Let's see. And these pay adjustments could be anywhere from three point five percent down to point seven five percent depending on how long the employee had been here and their performance. So that's, so that's kind of a quick run through and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. I also just would really like to recognize and thanks, thank Troy Mueller, the local president, and Steve Beer for just a really good relationship and partnership we've been able to have in recent years.
Tom, I have just a few comments.
Sure.
Firstly, I just want to commend you for your efforts to always explore how we can remain competitive on the cost side or on the, the wage side and really take care of our employees and create an environment where the city of Hutch is a, you know, a place that people want to come work. So thank you for those efforts. And also just wanted to mention that I've noticed a marked difference in the negotiation process with the IAFF since the arrival of Chief Beer a few years ago. And I think that is a real testament to your leadership, chief, and, and also Troy, to yours. And just, IAF are just really willing to negotiate in good faith and, and work collaboratively with the city. So just wanted to share my appreciation for that and the work you do every day to, to keep our community safe. And I'm excited to see this on the agenda.
Yep. Me too. I think we may have set a record this year, so.
Yeah, yeah. Before the budget passes. Imagine that, knowing what's going in the budget before it passes. That's, that's always good. Are there questions or comments on the MOU? Or a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the proposed memorandum of understanding with the IAFF Local One Seventy-Nine Bargaining Unit for two thousand twenty-three and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Pires de Carvalho.
Yes, and is there a motion on the letter of agreement?
I would move to approve the proposed letter of agreement.
I second that.
Okay, comments? Please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Pires de Carvalho.
Yes, next item, please.
Item nine, report of city officials.
Okay, let's start with you, Garza.
Yes, I'd be glad to start with me. We, I want to, we had a meeting Saturday to get together with all my southeast district neighbors and anybody. We had a lot of people there, I think, and it was about twenty people there. This is the third time I've had this meeting and I keep coming, more and more citizens coming to the meeting, which is great. I let all the, all the residents know what's going on. I meet before I go to those meetings, I meet with Gary and I meet with some, the financial director, I met with her. So everything I say is correct and not saying anything that's not correct. And it was a real good meeting. I had a lot of, like I said, we just sit there and we answer questions from the citizens. And Pastor Darrell Peterson over there in Grace Church at his school that he owns, gives me the gym. And people come there about nine o'clock in the morning, they sit down and we have just a, just a nice neighborly conversation. And we talk to all the citizens, let them know what's going on. I will have another one on my schedule in August, I think it'll be twenty or twenty-seventh. Anybody can come. I tried to put it on the radio and put all the posters out to let everybody know about it. This year I went on the, the talk show on Wednesday, nervous as heck to get on the talk show, but I did it.
Good job, Steve.
I, real quick, I, that day on Wednesday, one of the workers, I work at the state prison, is an electrician. And they said, why don't you go on the talk show? So I go to my boss and I said, sir, I'd like to take thirty minutes off for dinner. He goes, what's wrong, Steve? And I said, I want to go on a talk show. Really? I go, yeah. So I made sure I took vacation. He says, make sure you take your truck, go outside the prison. So here I am going across the street to the prison, getting on my phone and talking on the talk show. It is successful. That helped a lot of people come. So when you see my paper come up on the post or my, my image come up on the post, please come out. We have a good time and we talk. So that's all I want, to talk and make sure the citizens know what's going on with the city of Hutchinson and what, what the city commission's doing. And to let you guys know they think we're doing a good job.
Yeah.
So that's great to know. Another thing that I had going over there in the. Another thing that I had going over there in the southeast district, we finally had the, Rec Commission come and meet with me about making a name for our southeast district. That's a great, great opportunity. Now we're going to start meeting and try to get a name for our, our community. So that's a good thing going on. So make sure everybody goes to the emancipation park, their activities. Make sure they get out there and, we gotta support each other. I don't care what it is. Make sure we support our baseball, football, everything in our community. We're all family. So just act like a family. So every goal and support, everything we got going in Hutchison. It's been a great week for me and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. What do you have, Fast?
Well, we can talk about the southwest part of Hutchison now. There's a Woody Seat Meeting on August 11th from 5:30 to 7:30. It's a come and go. It's with the, the folks that are designing the roundabout and working backwards to see what can be designed for Avenue B. I would encourage all residents or interested citizens to show up. Again, August 11th at Avenue A School from 5:30 to 7:30. It's a come and go. If you have an opinion on what you would like to see that look like, please come. Jeff will be there, I will be there. And the people that are actually designing the plans will be there. I would like to echo what Jade said to the Fire Chief and Troy. Thank you. Makes our job pretty easy. And I asked Beer, Chief Beer, about six months ago what his secret was. And I know his secret and it has to do with you, Troy. But I, anyway, I appreciate the job you're doing. And also, I've, I've gotten a lot of complaints and it is important to me about our local homeless population seems to be increasing. I've spoke with the city manager about it. We are trying to see what other cities are doing. I, I understand it's, it's not illegal to be homeless, but we have a lot of issues in Avenue A Park and up and down Main Street that, that I think, that I think need to be addressed. And we are, we are working on that. Again, we're going to compare to other cities. We're going to visit with United Way, see if there's a way to help. And, and so anyway, I think that's all I had.
Okay, great. Thank you. What about you?
Two things. One, I believe today's election day. So if anyone has a chance, you should go out and vote. I would also ask Planning and Zoning to review our solar requirements for residential neighborhoods. See if there's a, some ways to make it easier on residents. I think we have some pretty strict requirements. That's separate from building code. I'm just curious about Planning and Zoning, if they would be willing to review that sometime in the near future. That's all I have.
Okay, wonderful. What about you, Sarah?
A lot of stuff is already covered, not yet. I was gonna say, today's election day, so please get out there and let your voice be heard and speak your opinion. And just a lot of great celebrations coming up. And I just wanted to thank Gary and Jim and everybody for helping with the chickens and we're moving forward and that's really awesome and exciting. And I hope everybody has a wonderful week. I know it's supposed to get really hot today, so.
Yeah, just the way I like it.
I do enjoy the heat, too. Yeah, and just really get, get out there and, and vote today.
Okay. Yeah, that was the main item I had on, on my comments. Polls are open until 7:00 PM today. Also wanted to reiterate Rebecca Kiesling's notification at the beginning of the meeting for our Sesko Centennial Day on the 15th. That'll happen before our next meeting, so that, it'll be right here at City Hall at 10:00 AM. And I hope you can come out for the opening of the Time Capsule. And as, as Steve also mentioned, don't forget emancipation celebration this weekend. Lots of great, family-friendly, free activities. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to you, City Manager.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure, of course.
I went to the picket to get my paper and they were telling me, Chief, I might bring this to you. She did tell me something this morning. Other cities drop off their homelessness here. Is that true, not true? What do you tell me about that? And that kind of disturbed me. Is that, I want to, is that true?
That has been a rumor since, as far back as I've been here. There have been isolated incidents where other communities have brought homeless here because of the services that we have and we have a homeless shelter. So I know for a fact that's happened on occasion, but I wouldn't say that that's a widespread problem that's an everyday occurrence. So I don't think that that in and of itself has led to Mr. Fast's assertion that our homeless population has, has gone up. I think it has gone up, but I don't think that that's necessarily the reason.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, in the interest of time, I don't have a report. If you have any questions, certainly I'd be willing to try to answer those or certainly you can contact me anytime.
Well, I'm just curious how long you think we're going to need on our executive session?
Probably 30 minutes, I think, is what Tom believes we'll need.
Okay, can we have a motion to recess until 11:00 AM?
I would move to recess till 11:00 AM.
Second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Okay, I believe we're live.
All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
I would entertain a motion.
Oh, motion to adjourn.
Hold on a second. Okay. I'll call a roll. Garza?
Yes.
Passed, yes. Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Iris DeCarvillo. We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.